All right, number two approval of the agenda. I have some amendments to the agenda. The first amendment to the agenda, um, under well due business, number C. Vote to approve Cogent County Regional High School DC trip for two thousand twenty-five. And then change number nine. To read action on the board superintendent contract. And to read appointment of an interim superintendent. And then staff reports to follow. Second by John. Uh, and discussion. All those in favor? We oppose, we abstain. Okay.
The amended agenda.
Second, second by Lucy. By Bob. All those in favor?
Hi.
So we abstain. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, we're starting off tonight with some pretty exciting recognitions of some pretty awesome individuals coming in the, um, girls soccer team is here. We are so incredibly proud of them. For winning the state championship this year, having a new coach. They have excelled all year long and a lot of us either watching during the season or postseason. We are so incredibly proud of what you guys have accomplished, especially with the new coach and such a young team, very, very young. So we just, um, we wanted to take some time and see if, um, if you get Coach Liam to say a few words about the season. And just so everyone knows, um, we're gonna the team is being recognized with banner during halftime. So when it gets close to halftime, we're gonna take a recess from the meeting to go down and watch them, um, do the banner raising and we'll come back to the regular meetings. Thank you so much for coming.
Of course. Hey, guys, I'm Coach Liam. Um, I just want to say a couple of things, um, about our season. Um, it's an honor to stand before you guys today, um, as we celebrate our two thousand twenty-four class S state championship, um, for the first time in Cogent County State history. Uh, this evening is not just a recognition of an incredible athletic achievement, but also a moment to reflect on the values of teamwork, dedication, and perseverance that those young student athletes have exemplified. To the Board of Educ- Education, we are deeply grateful for your ongoing support of our programs and your commitment to the growth of both our students and our communities. Your belief in the power of sports to build character and teamwork is what allows us to achieve great things on and off the field. Uh, we thank you for the resources encouragement you provide to our students and staff. Um, to our team, uh, the championship is an amazing accomplishment. What I'm proud most of is the culture we built. Um, your positive attitude encouragement for each other was a driving force behind their success this season. You've proven that with determination, teamwork, and heart, anything is possible. Uh, this championship is a testament to your commitment and spirit. To the families and supporters in this room, thank you for standing up by us every step of the way. Your encouragement, your cheers from the stands, and your belief in these athletes have meant the world to us. You are a vital part of, of this success and we share this achievement with you. Tonight is a celebration of the hard work, sacrifice, and perseverance that it takes to be a championship. All right, a champion, sorry. It's also a celebration of the wonderful community that surround these athletes. The CRHS student body, the families, the school faculty, administration, and the Board of Education, all working together to ensure the young people can reach their full potential. Um, on behalf of the team and coaching staff, thank you to the Board of Education for this incredible recognition. Um, this evening, we are proud to represent our school and community, and we look forward to continuing our success next season. Looking forward to seeing many of you guys later this evening when the team receives their championship banner in the gymnasium. Thank you.
Just so you guys know, we have cupcakes in the back for you guys. If you guys wanna grab a cupcake, um, take it with you or hang out and listen to us.
They say repeat on it.
Okay, I will move on to number four, which isn't always as exciting with numbers, but we love when our auditor comes to talk to us. Um, the auditor's report. Yep, so we'll call up Dave Flint. Dave Flint is from Clifton Larson Allen, and he has the review of the annual independent buying. Uh, you all got copies earlier electronically, but there's hard copies because it's gonna be hard to some pages.
Yeah, thank you so much, guys. Um, I saw the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna keep this quick and super high level, but if you have any questions, feel free, um, to interrupt me. All right, so I'm gonna start with your financial statements. Uh, hopefully everyone has a copy. So I'm gonna start, um, on page one, and this is your opinion, um, that we give over the financial statements, and you have received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that can be received. So flipping ahead to page five is the management's discussion and analysis. Now, this is prepared by Ken every year, and it's kind of a high-level overview summary of the financial statements of the district. If there's five minutes you're gonna spend on this, this is where I would spend it. All right, into the finance. So if you flip to page thirteen, um, this is your statement of net position, and this is prepared on a full accrual basis of accounting. And what that means is it includes your capital assets and your long-term debt. Um, you'll see up at the top, uh, you have total capital assets of a little over thirty-seven million, um, which is detailed out on page thirty-four if you're interested. Um, down in the liability section, um, you have a little over nineteen million dollars in long-term debt, which is detailed out on page thirty-five. Um, that brings you down, um, to total net position of twenty-three point six million dollars. Um, most of that is your net investment in capital assets, which is your capital assets less any debt, um, that the district has to acquire those capital assets. Um, again, the next page, uh, your statement of activities more commonly referred to as, as your income statement. Again, full accrual basis accounting, you'll see that the change in net position for the year is a hundred and ninety-seven point nine thousand dollars. So that, that's your surplus. But again, that's a, that's a full accrual basis of accounting. Um, I think what's probably more important, um, if you switch to page fifteen, and you have your fund financial statements, which are modified accrual basis of accounting, no capital assets, no long-term debt. Um, you'll see here we have our four major funds, and there are non-major governmental funds, which are all the other smaller funds combined. Um, the general fund for the year, uh, ended up with an, uh, an ending fund, fund balance of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And you'll see two hundred and twenty-two of that is assigned, which is encumbrances from this year that are being carried over into fiscal year twenty-five. Your school cafeteria fund has a fund balance of three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, which is a result of how profitable, um, the, the, the fund was during COVID. Um, and, and it's consistent with what other cafeteria funds have done across the state. And that's due to the federal, um, funding that was received. Um, we have a special school grants and programs fund, which is where all the grants come through, um, minimal fund balance there, which is what is to be expected. We only recognize what we spend. And then we have our capital reserve fund, which has a fund balance of a little over five million dollars. Uh, most of that is, is the bond proceeds that we issued, um, last year. And last year, I mean fiscal year twenty-three. And then the, the remaining non-major funds, we have fund balance of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So flipping ahead, um, two pages, um, to, what is that, seventeen, to exhibit four, and this is the, like I said before, the income statement, the revenue expenditures for each of those funds. Um, you'll see that the general fund had a, had a small deficit of eighty-six thousand dollars. Not to be alarmed, the deficit was budgeted for the fund, um, to use up some of that fund balance. School cafeteria fund, again, not receiving all that federal funding anymore, had a small eleven thousand dollar surplus for the year. Special school grants and programs, small thirteen thousand dollar surplus. Again, we're only using the revenue that we spend, so we don't expect much there. And then the capital reserve fund, um, that's where all the capital expenditures are going through. As those start to get larger, we're spending down that bond issuance from two thousand twenty-three. You'll see we have a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar deficit, um, which is to be expected. And then those small major funds add up to an eighty-two point, uh, nine thousand dollar surplus in the non-majors. All right, so I'm gonna go through the things that I think, um, you probably are concerned about. Um, so page thirty-five is the, is the long-term debt. You'll see that the district has us about six point nine million dollars in bonds outstanding. Um, those are two issuances, uh, one from, oh, um, oh-nine and one from two thousand twenty-two. Um, and then the other major thing here, we have a lease liability. Um, those are equipment leases. These were brought in the books a couple of years ago, uh, ago with, with a new accounting standard, GASB eighty-seven. Um, you'll see a big increase this year, two point six million dollars. Much of that is actually the new bus lease, um, for, that was, um, entered into in two thousand twenty-four. All right, so I am going to skip ahead to page fifty-nine. Um, this is your budget to actual, um, for your general fund. So what we budgeted to what we got. Um, I think it's a good thing to look at to see how we're budgeting and how we're taking. Revenues, not much to talk about, but you will see down in other financing sources, you'll see appropriation of fund balance. You'll see a hundred, uh, four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of fund balance was used to balance this year's budget. More importantly, the next page, RSI two, um, this is the expenditure side of it. Up top, you'll see overages for, for salaries and employees, and, and this is just due to headcount. Headcount is extremely difficult to budget, and we see each year, sometimes we have overages, sometimes we have under, underages. That's like, you know what I'm trying to say? Um, but we were, we're, we're, we were able to make that up and more, um, with purchase services, um, operational services, supplies, and, and we come down to a total, um, positive variance for expenditures of five hundred and eight thousand dollars, and that's on, on page sixteen. All right, um, moving on to page sixty-two, um, we have the district's pension plan. Um, you'll see that there is an ending net pension liability in the twenty-twenty-four column towards the bottom, um, one million forty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine. Your pension is ninety-two point two-four percent funded, which is rate funding ratio. Anything over eighty percent, we generally say is good. Ninety-two point two-four is awesome. The next page, um, is your, you know, basically what your actuary is telling you to put into your pension every year versus what you're putting, and you'll see that we're putting in one hundred percent of what the actuary is calculating needs to go in, which is great. And then finally, RSI, RSI five, page sixty-four is the, uh, investment rate of return we're getting from the investments within the pension. You saw we had a great year, uh, nine point eight percent return of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Um, so teachers and administrators are obviously in the state teacher plan. Um, and you'll see, obviously, that's a plan that's funded by the state, um, but we do, we are required to disclose some of the information. So similar or unsimilar to district's plan, which is ninety-two percent funded. I do like to point out that the state's plan is only fifty-two point, fifty-two percent funded. But it's, you know, you see, it's been pretty stagnant over the last ten years, so. Um, all right, so we also have an OPEP plan. Um, the OPEP plan is not funded. There's no trust fund to fund us. We're basically paying those whole COVID expenditures as we go. Um, there is an ending liability of four point five million dollars. Again, no funding, no funding percentage, no investment rate of return, because there are no investments associated with this plan. There's also no PIP plan for teachers, and, and you'll see that that funding percentage is only eleven point nine percent. Any questions on the financial statements?
And they opened. You know, we have talked in the past about whether or not we should build a fund. I mean, the, the costs here don't seem to be driving that decision, but yeah, what do you think?
Um, to be honest with you, a lot of your peers have gotten away from them, and they're paying us to go as well. I don't, I don't think, it's not something I would recommend.
Yeah, when it first came in, yeah, it was everybody just trying to put together money for it.
Yeah, the, a lot of those OPEP trust funds were eliminated during the oh-eight, oh-nine pandemic recession, and they just really haven't come back. All right, so we issued two. Sorry, do you have any more questions, Bob? Sorry. Um, we issued two additional reports. We do a federal single audit and we do a state single audit. Um, these have to do with both the federal and state grants that the district receives. Um, there's a special formula on which grants we have to audit each year and how many of them we have to do. Um, you'll see again, we gave an unmodified opinion for the federal single audit. There were no issues with grants, compliance, internal controls, et cetera. Pages four, or excuse me, page five, um, lists out all the federal grants that were expended in fiscal year twenty-four. Kind of interesting, you'll see one point one million dollars in total federal awards were expended on the fiscal year twenty-four. The programs that we specifically audited in fiscal year twenty-four, um, were the special education cluster, more commonly referred to as IDEA. And then last but not least, the state single audit, um, very similar, unmodified opinions, the best opinion, no issues with compliance, no differences with internal controls surrounding these grants. Starting on page four, you'll see, um, a total of four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in total state assistance was expended. And we did test for fiscal year twenty-four. We did audit, um, the workforce alliance grants, um, and the adult education grants. Again, no issues were noted with those single audits. Any questions in regards to those? I would like to make one more note. Um, you will notice, um, the date of our reports this year, October ninth, two thousand twenty-four, that is the earliest we've issued this audit, and then that's not even close. That is at least a month and a half earlier than we've done, and we passed. Um, I think that's just a testament to Kim and her team. So well done, Kim.
Wonderful, thank you. I, I think we all, you know how much we appreciate Kim and, and, and everything they do, and we never have anything but, um, confidence that. I know it, it looks the same every year, and every year is wonderful.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Um, it's been the meeting, public comment should have heard, I am on the agenda.
Hello, uh, my name is Nick Fiala from Millfield. I'm Vice President of Bench Formers, and I'm here with Eric Guy, President, and our longtime, uh, Treasurer, Doc Lima. I'm here to present the results of the two thousand twenty-four banner advertising as required under our agreement with the Board of Ed. I will file, uh, an official report with Kim tomorrow via email. The, the banner program raised roughly twenty-five thousand dollars this year, and after expenses netted, uh, was roughly twenty-two thousand. Out of the twenty-two thousand, the bench warmers invested over thirty-four thousand back into our student athletes with another five thousand pending invoices, so that's almost forty thousand dollars for the year. The largest single investment came in, in the way of scholarships to student athletes, uh, which totaled last year fourteen thousand dollars, and that was an increase of four thousand dollars from the previous year. We continue to work with diligently with the Athletic Director to find appropriate ways for the bench warmers to continue to support all student athletes at Cogent County Regional High School. Finally, I know some folks use this microphone to criticize your work, and that far too few come before you to say thank you. To the Board of Ed, thank you for all of your time and efforts, and it does not go unnoticed, and I appreciate all your work. Um, if you have any questions, uh, like I said, I'll, I'll file a formal report and copy everybody tomorrow, and you guys can hit me back via email. Thank you.
And, and so I'm here to give you good news. Uh, I'm here to gift you a new scores table for the girls and boys basketball team and for the volleyball team. Um, the price tag is about five thousand dollars, so you have to now vote for your approval of this. Um, I emailed you pictures of it this afternoon, later this afternoon, so some of you may have not seen it, or I may have not emailed you. Tina, you were one of the ones I did not, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, Johnny, Johnny, you're a bench warmer. You should be on those emails anyway.
I got him.
So.
It's beautiful table.
So that should be in shortly, so that'd be about five thousand dollars, so. Any questions on this scores table?
Have you guys warmed up since, uh, the weekend?
No, no, my toes are still a little frozen.
Thank you, guys, all that you did. And thank you for coming.
And, and we did give a thousand dollars to the girls soccer team for championship rings. We need that also, so.
That's right, that's awesome.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. We'll see you halftime.
Yes. Are we getting notified for that, by the way?
Um, I, I think that is Todd gonna call us when it's, Todd gonna text when it's both. Yeah, I, I, I got you. He's coming back, and then I'll, I'll give you like a five-minute warning. Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Sarah Salling. I'm from Durham. I have two kids in the district. I'm here tonight with regards to the recommendations proposed by the Special Ed Oversight Committee. First, I want to thank the Board for the creation of the committee and for the countless hours many of you have spent with employees exploring ways that we can improve the services for our kids. I have read all the meeting minutes and the reports, and I am well-versed in the immense focus that you have put on this topic. My daughter Sophie is in third grades at John Lyman, having transitioned there this year after five years at Brewster. Sophie has Down Syndrome. She has an extensive IEP and has been in the special ed program since pre-K three. She has numerous certified and non-certified service providers working with her every day. As we prepared last year for Sophie's transition to Lyman, her service team, Jen Keane and I worked very closely to ensure she had the best plan in place, and I'm incredibly appreciative for the lengths that were taken to ensure a smooth transition. Over the summer, her team, two of her team members did leave the district, including her special ed teacher and her VCPA. I want to be very clear, I have no personal insight into why either one of them left the district, but I do think it's important for me to share in alignment with the concerns that were raised by the Board last summer, which precipitated the creation of the Oversight Committee. While her current team is amazing, there have been some instances of discontinuity in her services as a result of the team changes. Children with learning profiles like Sophie, they need consistency. They need repetition, and they need the least amount of change possible in order to be successful. Sophie happens to be in one of the few grades that will already be facing a number of changes with the interim building plan. We, as her team, are already facing an uphill battle as we move her from Lo- to Lyman this year, to a modular next year, and to Strong for fifth grade. She cannot also continue to have numerous team changes as well. She is already being set back immensely. I am in full support of the recommendations that are being made by the committee, including, but not limited to, addressing the staffing concerns by determining the ideal staffing level needs for the dis- department, adding case managers and other supporting roles to increase, given the significant increase in special education services needed since the two thousand ten school year, improving the onboarding training and shadowing opportunities for staff, and expanding the pool of available and qualified substitutes. I am also in support of the recommendations to review and revise the organizational reporting structure within the district to include the addition of a department administrator, as I believe a span of two hundred to one structure is unreasonable for any person. With regards to the issue of an unprofessional, disrespectful, and retaliatory work environment, as well as the suggestion that staff may be hesitating to report non-compliance with IDEA for fear of retaliation, I stand here assuming that we can all agree that this is completely unacceptable and needs to be addressed immediately. I trust Dr. Shook that you will develop a clear plan, which includes actionable and time-bound steps for improvement, details the supports that you will put in place to achieve those steps, provides a confidential mechanism for raising concerns, and a clear method for reporting on progress. I would also ask that you build steps in, which can be carried through in the years to come, so that your successor will ensure these improvements are retained and continued. The Oversight Committee has shed light on a number of concerning things that are happening within the district. When I think about Sophie's future, I don't worry about how many kids are gonna be in her classroom next year. I worry about whether she's ever gonna be able to live an independent life. I worry about whether she's gonna be able to read and do simple math. The time which she is protected under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is limited to the time that she spends here in this district, and time is not on her side. Every minute that she spends in these hallways are critical to her future. She and the other twenty-two percent of the special ed students in this district cannot wait for these items to be addressed, and I urge you to make more priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other in-person public comment at this time?
My name is Amanda Betty, and I'm actually gonna be reading the, um, quick, who could we be here tonight? She, I can't be there tonight, so it's, and but she wants to touch base quickly on the Special Education Committee Report and Recommendations. She finds it interesting at the last meeting that the Board chose Cave and Superintendent Search Committee without really much discussion or any alternatives mentioned. And she now sees that Cave is listed again on the potential agencies that could help with an evaluation of the findings of the Special Education Committee Report. I mentioned this in my email to the Board, but I also think it should be said publicly and on the record. I requested the Board consider a full district evaluation by an outside education consulting firm like PCG, especially in light of all of the current changes such as reconfigurations, major construction projects, a new superintendent, strategic plan, curriculum, et cetera, coupled with an already poor district plan. I'm sure Cave is a great resource, but I truly feel an independent evaluation is warranted, and do not feel using an agency directly affiliated with Board members is prudent, as it could undermine this process. While I understand and agree that our special education department is in crisis mode and truly needs more support, I think a full district evaluation, rather than an evaluation of just one department, would be invaluable to our community at this major transition point. Furthermore, as you consider an additional special education administer, administrator to represent twenty-two percent of the students in our district, I would also like to see you consider hiring a curriculum director for the seventy-eight percent of general education students we're currently rolling out, a brand new curriculum, introducing part in multiple pilot studies without one.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you. Emma Quick. Any other in-person?
Hi, morning. I'm from Durham. Um, just a couple of good news things. Um, soccer, amazing, right? And what I don't think many people here know is that the team's gonna be even better next year and the year after that. The repeat is, is, is a good, it's a good thing. Um, thanks to Deb and Katie for your email you sent out the other day about just climate and culture and bullying, and my only comment back was, let's do that more. I think we think everybody knows those things, and maybe just the more they hear them, the, the better it is. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, and lastly, just a comment about Strong. Um, this is my fifth year with kids in that school since we've moved here. Um, and I know there's been a lot of concern, um, lately from the folks who will have fifth-grade students coming up. I'm not, I'm a special ed program, I heard, goes out to, I'm very afraid of them. Super accurate, everything you said, so thank you. Um, from, from our perspective, um, the fifth-grade students coming in have nothing to worry about. The school is in the best culture and the best place it's been in since we got here. Um, my, uh, daughters have progressively done better there. Um, even teachers that we had push-pull with in the past are, um, trying different things and approaching kids in different ways. Um, the, the, the students are just behaving differently and better, I think. So my perspective as a parent with kids in that school continually for the last five years is just that it's really culturally and culturally and leadership-wise and student body-based and teacher, teacher, what's the word I'm looking for, like well-being and engagement is the best it's ever been. So I know it's gonna be a hard transition for some, but I really am confident that it's the best that it's ever been. And thank you for all of you guys, too. We appreciate it.
Any more in-person? If you have any in-person, I'll go online if you have any after, if we can come back to it. The only one I see with their hand up is Roger, if you want to go ahead, if you can hear me.
Oh, thank you again. I was not unmuted. But the coaches and the bench warmers were very clear, and we could hear them very clearly on my iPad here. But I cannot hear the head table hardly at all. So could you move the mic closer to the head table or in the middle of the room or someplace so we can hear you? Thank you very much.
Roger, we're working on it. We can turn this one off if it helps. That was Roger Freeman from. Maybe that will help a little bit. A little bit, maybe. Is there any more online public comment? Do we have any more in-person public comment before we move on? We'll have another chance at the end for non-agenda items. All right, we will move on to number six. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Education's special meeting, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-fourth. I didn't find any changes or corrections. Second, second by Linda. Okay, all those in favor to approve the minutes of the special meeting, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-fourth, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained?
All abstained.
I think most of my stuff under camera update can come under communications. So I will move on to Dr. Wilson's.
Happy New Year to everybody. Twenty twenty-five is a great year for all of you. I don't have any other reports tonight.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of. Yeah. They'll knock out my emails. Well, Kim, you want to do staff reports while I close up?
A very short report. December, we close out December forty-seven percent expended, ninety-nine point six percent encumbered, and we've received fifty percent of our budgeted revenue to date around the end of December. I've heard from the auditors about audit report. One thing I wanted to clarify on that is when you mentioned that the salaries were over budget because it was hard to budget head companies, right, but we factor in the vacancy factor, so that's to be expected that we'd have that big. Did, you'll recall, we went from ninety-six, five to ninety-eight to help kind of close that gap. And the budget process is moving forward, and we're looking at proposals and looking line by line at every, every thing that's put in the budget, and I just want to give a big shout out to Tippy Hop who does an amazing job with the audit. That's why it was done, so our L A sheet gets everything ready for them before they get here, and so I just want to. Thank you.
I just have one question, Kim, because it came up. I know we approved the buses and stuff like that, and he had mentioned the buses on there. You just want to explain that again, just in case we get any questions, why we made that decision at that particular time.
Well, at that time, we were talking about while bus contract was coming to an end. And that was the time where the legislators were talking about making it all electric requirement, which I don't know that is even feasible, and I think that they walked back on that. But we had an opportunity with Daco, who's our thirty-six-year provider, to purchase a fleet of propane buses that they had, and actually with that municipal lease and then paying them to just operate them, we actually had a savings. They're actually gonna buy the buses back from us after our five-year lease, or we can renew the lease again for five years, not the lease, but the contract at no cost for the buses, because we'll own them at that point. Or they'll purchase them back for us, and I, off the top of my head, I don't remember how much, but it was between five, six hundred thousand and a million dollars, depending on how many buses. If we had renewed the contract that we had had using Daco's buses, we were looking at a significant increase. So we saved a lot of money by going propane, plus propane is cheaper than gas. There is a federal excise tax that we get that offsets our propane taxes.
I just wanted you to clarify that, just in case we got any questions about that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kim, I'll have some questions during the building committee report.
Okay, going back to number nine and ten, we address these together, the action on the board contract and the appointment of an interim superintendent. I'll first go through some motions and then have some words to speak. But I will make a motion, but the board hereby approve a separation agreement with Dr. Shook, accept Dr. Shook's leave and resignation pursuant to that agreement, and authorize its chairman to execute said agreement on behalf of the board. That's that one. Someone want to make that motion for me?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Second by Jason. Any discussion? I'm gonna read it after. If we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, with that, I will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? With that, I have a joint statement from Dr. Shook and I that I'd like to read. This will also come out as a public statement tonight, as well as another public statement on the next agenda item. Dr. Douglas Shuck, Superintendent of Region Thirteen Public Schools, has announced his resignation, and the Region Thirteen Board of Education has accepted his resignation effective March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Dr. Shook is extremely grateful for the honor and privilege to serve the children and families and employees of Durham and Middlefield over the next four, over the last four years. During his time as superintendent, Dr. Shook and the board worked together to reorganize Region Thirteen schools to improve learning and operate more efficiently. With the approval of the amended regionalization plan and the related referendum, the Region Thirteen school community is moving forward with a three-school configuration, which will include the planning, design, and moving, sorry, planning, design, and construction of a renovated and expanded memorial school to serve all children in grades pre-K five. Together, the board and Dr. Shuck also successfully navigated many challenges associated with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, making long overdue upgrades to Picket Lane and the Coggin Chog Regional High School Stadium complex. In addition, Dr. Shook and the board collaborated to support teachers and other certified staff through a personalized, relevant, and job-driven professional learning system. With Dr. Shook's tenure as superintendent coming to an end, he and the board have agreed that his, that this is an appropriate time to make way for new leadership. The Region Thirteen Board of Education thanks Dr. Shook for his efforts on behalf of Region Thirteen Public Schools over the last four years, and the board wishes Dr. Shook well for the future. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dan. Next one, further move. I'm not gonna move. I'll take a motion that the board hereby appoint Dr. Patricia Charles to serve as interim superintendent effective January ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorizes its chairman to execute the related contract on behalf of the board.
Make the motion.
Second motion by Bob. Second by Linda. Any discussion? I also have a statement to read on that as well. With that, you know, discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Not motion passes. With that note, Regional School District Thirteen Board of Education is pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Patricia Charles as interim superintendent effective January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Dr. Charles brings a wealth of experience, dedication, and a proven track record of leadership to our district. Her extensive background includes serving as superintendent in both Middletown and Westbrook, along with interim positions in East Grandy and Westbrook. We are confident that Dr. Charles' expertise and proven leadership will guide our district through this transitional period with remarkable skill and professionalism. With an established history of achievements in staff recruitment, social-emotional learning initiatives, and professional development, she has consistently demonstrated her ability to drive student success and cultivate thriving school communities. Dr. Charles' strategic vision has also led to meaningful results in school environments, where she has successfully overseen complex building renovations and developed comprehensive facility improvement plans. Her wealth of experience in managing large-scale educational projects will be invaluable as Region Thirteen undertakes the renovation and expansion of Memorial School. Her expertise will ensure a seamless transition as we accommodate the integration of preschool through fifth grade students and navigate the challenges of school construction. In addition to Dr. Charles, the board is working alongside the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Search Services to launch a comprehensive, inclusive search for our permanent superintendent. We are committed to engaging with all stakeholders in our community, including families, staff, students, and local partners. To ensure that this process reflects the values and priorities of Regional School District Thirteen, Dr. Charles shares our vision for a collaborative and forward-thinking approach to leadership, and we look forward to her contributions as interim superintendent. And we thank Dr. Charles for stepping into this role and invite the entire community to join us in welcoming her to Regional School District Thirteen. She's not with us tonight, but she will be here tomorrow, and I know that she will be reaching out to many in this process. Thank you for listening. And we wish Dr. Shook all well on his next journey. And thank you for your service here. All right. Movie reports. Bob, and then Bob again.
I had a policy to be met. We spent a little bit of time talking about the facility use regulations. We decided that the policy was fine the way it was, but the facility use regulations had to be amended. We had a lot of discussion. Kim has amended them, basically that our youth groups basically will fall into the classification where there's no real fee, and a lot of the other things will be done there. There'll be further discussions about use of the bathrooms and lights for some of the nonprofit organizations and youth services. So those regulations will be done through Kim, so we decided that the policy was broad enough to cover it. And regulations would be the ones that would regulate the actual activities on site. And we think there will be really no changes to any of the youth groups that are using the facilities then. The next item we talked about was the bullying and climate policy and spent a great deal of time dealing with this comprehensive and complex issue. And we talked quite a bit of time about restorative training and the staff that we have. We expect the two folks that are trained in restorative practices will be our next policy committee. And I think as a result of that, the principals, I think Deb and others have sent out a little bit of information on how climate and bullying this year, this last couple of days, and we appreciate that. And so that's, we should be wrapping up the bullying policy on our next meeting. Hopefully that we'll get that finalized. And we started talking about the six thousand series, which include school schedules and a variety of things. We ended up with about five minutes to talk about them, but we ended up saying, well, we'll move them on to the next policy agenda. We will go through the six thousand series and get those things wrapped up. That was it. Building committee. Basically, we talked about a great deal of things, but the first one was lighting. We talked about the possibility of lighting the tennis courts. And we have determined that the structures that are there would not take the current lighting, so we would end up having to rebuild the structures for the lighting to hold it at the right level. And even think the bases that were there would be sufficient. We also looked at the total tennis court revitalization that looks like we need to have a, it's a really expensive several million dollars to upgrade those. We were working, we spent about twenty-five thousand a year on resurfacing and fixing the cracks. So we basically said we needed to start to budget the savings account or feature or reserve to replace the tennis courts in the future, and we would try to figure out how to deal with the lights at that time as well. We did talk about putting lighting on the track. So at the end, if you've been at any of the soccer or football games, you'll notice that the inland zones are lit, but the track beyond it is not lit, and that would prohibit us from having an evening track meet. So our lighting specialist said that with some attachments to the two poles on the end, we could light the end of the two tracks so that we could have lighting in there, and also under our current lighting grant, we could, for the safety sake, we could also improve the lighting in the parking lot. The parking lot is very dark after you leave the lighted area, so that's within our grant money that we are able to do that. We have about ninety-three thousand dollars left, and so that would take up, part of that would be used for this. And we have a little bit left after that to have really concur still trying to decide what to do with that.
Those lights on the either side of the track, just to explain it, the poles, we would, it would be adding one light on each four of the poles that would aim towards that area. The ones on the side closest to where the concessions and the fieldhouse are will, will get lit on top of the track being lit. So it'll improve safety in general, and I don't know if Bob said it, but the cam lights in will be upgraded based on the lights. So we'll have way more lighting in that back parking lot where the student parking lot is, and walking into the complex, we all see it's kind of dark when we come into events, so.
We had heavy discussion on the light pollution too on that, so that it wouldn't affect the neighboring area as well. So that would all be concentrated onto the parking lot, not affecting the surrounding area.
Yep.
Just want to make sure that is out there, too.
Yeah.
We then talked about replacement of the track around the field. We have on the aside for some replacement, we'll need a little bit more in this year's budget to finish that up, and then we would, there are a few options with placing the track. We're gonna do some engineering studies to make sure that the underlying is strong enough to take on the new surface area, and it's a fairly expensive process. There's lots of options for it, but I think that within our budget, we can with a little more money this year and our capital budget, we'll be able to replace the track over the summer. So that will be, the track is fifteen-plus years old. It's five or ten years past. It's probably five years past its expected life, but it's been held up pretty good. There was a cave in in a portion of it, and that's been fixed, and we've looked at that study to make sure that's holding on, and it's seem to be holding up. That was very. that it was very, um. Yeah, and we talked about getting the RFP out. Uh, and the RFQ out. Um, Kim has moved ahead with the RFP and RFQ on the, uh, memorial project. More school project than those will be out shortly. I think when it's out, Kim.
The architect.
The architect was out. Uh, and, uh, we needed to move ahead to get those, uh, plans done and get ready. And so that'll be the one ahead. Um, it's a reversible activity, uh, when we get the So the process in, in way and the building committee would be the one reviewing that. So I think that was about it. Maybe I'll stand up. No, it's a
Um, I don't have much on Aces update, other than I, we have a meeting tomorrow. Um, they're currently working on two different, um, building, construction, renovation projects. Um, I'm gonna sit on one of the building committees for it and some insight from Aces, um. And I, I want to try to meet with Aces and see if we can get, you know, some some information and process for school climate or analyzing school climate. Um, they've got a lot going on with restorative practices and school climate. I mean, maybe a good partner on that, the resources they have. Yeah, that's all I have on Aces. On to board communications, um, professional development. I think we just have a ton of things either we've all gone to, um, or we, you know, we've talked about our upcoming, um, Coggin Chog Robotics this weekend is, um, going to the Walcut qualifier. They've got a really impressive robot. I don't think it was, they're working on before, um, but um, Walsh is really excited. Um, they anticipate to do pretty well um, this year. A lot of really good kids on that, on that team. Um, if anyone saw the Hartford Current, Tim Fisher and the Pep Band were almost front page news on that one, uh, at the basketball game, uh, the Hartford Current came and did a really beautiful, comprehensive, um, article on, on the Pep Band and she, you know, even talking to her at, at the basketball game, she said, this is one of the best pep bands. She was like, it is the best pep, best pep band I've ever come across. And it was nice. Like you could tell that every single one of the kids was really thrilled to be a part of it. Um, and I know everyone loves seeing their, their face and name and they're on a paper.
You probably ought to change the sign above the pep bands. They voted best pep band in the state.
We have some, obviously we have a recognition for girls soccer banner. Um, the other day they did a recognition for Piper Remillard from, uh, who graduated this year on her seventy-five and oh, uh, high school career all four years. They raised that banner. It meant so much to her to come back from Stonehill this year and be recognized for it. And I know her family was thrilled and she's gonna do great things at Stonehill. I'm excited for her. Um, we also have the four by four hundred, um, mixed relay team that, uh, achieved all American status. That will be, I believe it's on the, it's not still here, the fifteenth, is that what it is? So many different dates and I know we've changed stuff around. Yeah. Um, and you want to explain Strong's, the invitation from Strong?
Oh, yeah, they, um, Strong, the tech program down there, Tech Ed is doing, and, and Cheryl, I think Cheryl, I saw Cheryl earlier. Cheryl, if I leave anything out, um, I just wanted to mention that, um, they've been participating in a program called Go Baby Go. And that's affiliated with which university is it? Central, Central, um, where, um, schools are invited to modify automate, automatic, like, um, like little kid quad or four by four. Thank you. Um, and so they're having their kind of launch on Saturday where they're going to be demonstrating. Go ahead.
It's the third time, um, Scott's done it. Um, it's actually really heartwarming. Uh, the parents coming in with their children and um, our kids, our students have been working out the specs of what will allow those students to be able to use this. So each one is specific, um, and it's really heartwarming, especially to see that these kids now are mobile and can do it. And also to see our students who are eleven, twelve, thirteen work so hard. And then when the kids come in, they still have to make last minute changes. Uh, it, it's really a nice event. If anyone get there this Saturday, I suggest up and it's really nice.
And it starts between nine and ten thirty.
Yeah, right. We got that today, so it's gonna be exciting.
Very exciting.
I, I personally know my grandson is at Central and he worked on Go Baby Go and has worked on this project. Uh, he majored in Tech Ed at Central. And so, uh, he has worked on this project and thanks to Rob Bajoras and others, he's probably will major in special ed.
Uh, with that, I'm just on your communications. Um, I do have a few emails, uh, that I have to respond to the board, full board got, um. I waited till after today to respond to those, so I can forward them to the appropriate administrators, um, but I don't have anything that you guys weren't all cc'd on. And if anyone else have any other?
Did Jamie Owens, he did jump in, like be sick on last Saturday when it was about fifteen degrees out, so.
Yeah, it was cold. I didn't warm up till like that next morning.
For the bench warmers fundraiser.
And I'm happy to report I did not feel the need to eat the stick of butter afterwards, like the previous year. So I guess I'm used to it now.
That was, it was great. It was, it was a lot colder than last year and Park and Rec were out breaking up the ice before we went in. And that was a little
That was a clue.
I was, yeah, that was a clue that we were not going to be warm. Yeah, I think they said they're gonna continue it every year, so it should be fun. Anyone else? Okay, all right, I will move on to new business. Um, I know we tabled this last, so, um, I know we had too much discussion on it, but I will, um, bring it up for discussion and possible vote to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six district calendar. Doug, you want to highlight any of the?
Yeah, I think I went over some of this briefly the last time, but what we tried to do was model this one as closely as possible to the current twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. Uh, it seemed to be resounding with a lot of families and with a lot of employees. Uh, I, I think the things that people like in addition to all the regular holidays that we give is that um, our, our teaching and other ten-month staff prefer to come back on a Monday. Um, so this kind of honors the three days that they work before the children arrive. Um, and then the Thursday, Friday, um, prior to Labor Day would be the start of school. On the backend, it also, uh, supports a last day of school scheduled for a Friday. And therefore a Friday high school graduation, which is something that a lot of people think works. Especially for families that have out of town guests or graduates. And again, the board has the ability, and it's done the last few years to as school starts to lock in that graduation date, so it doesn't get backed up by any inclement weather, uh, the, the, the two differences that you, you'll probably see is next year new year's is on a Thursday.
It's almost two weeks, right?
Well, yeah, it is a Thursday. Yeah, and, and so, um, the holiday is more towards the backend. Um, and because of that, we, we would give an early release on the twenty-third. Uh, we have, we didn't do that this year because the day going into the holiday was the twentieth, so we had a full day of school, but um, because we're, we're doing it kind of to the second weekend, if that makes sense. Um, that was there. And the other thing that is different is that uh, this year, Good Friday, which is a district, happens to be on the same week as spring break. And that bought us an extra snow makeup day. So next year's calendar only has one snow makeup day, but everyone kind of agreed it wasn't worth it to add more snow makeup days and have to start the year earlier and the year later. And so we just hope that we don't have a lot of inclement weather.
And graduation date is set anyway.
You all will have the ability to set that probably in September. That's, that's what the, the code allows for, and that would be my recommendation. I won't be here, obviously, but hopefully somebody will remember. It can be the high school administration can put that on the board's radar if people forget, because that's important. And I think, um, I think people are excited about that.
I think it's work too, and I think it's helped people plan and families plan, um, especially with how expensive travel is. I think it's, I think it's really helped.
I agree. And Craig, is it okay to say that you and I met and reunion is pleased with this calendar? Thank you for that. That's helpful as well.
So purpose of discussion, uh, make a vote to approve, uh, the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six district calendar is presented.
I'm with.
I'm with John.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please, uh, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. I will go to, um, the DC trip. So this is the, um, num- number that I had added. Um, for discussion purposes, uh, um, I'll take a motion to approve the Coggin Chog Regional High School DC trip for twenty twenty-five. Bob's second fight. John, okay, discussion. Anyone that you want to talk on it real quick? I know you sent it to us.
Greg actually filled it out late. Um, so it's the same as, like Greg, um, it's the same as every year, the agenda remains the same, um, by putting it on the agenda tonight. Thank you. Um, it gives Greg the ability to plan the events and buy the tickets and secure the times and send out the letters because it is, it can be costly for families. And so we try to break up the payments into, um, four parts, sometimes more. And so by letting them know early, it, it's very helpful to families. So that's why we do it now.
We're, it looks like the same model as last year.
Yeah.
Too, um, and the amount of feedback from this year, they, they had a blast this year.
Every time. They have a great time every year and they're so well behaved and they really, Craig does a great job. I have to give him props. He's been doing it for many years and he's got it down to a science. And he really, he, he takes the best people and, and they do a really good job.
All the kids kept saying we are exhausted the entire time, and I realize I keep them exhausted.
When we call the ten thirty meeting, uh, and you know, when we're there at night, we call the ten thirty PM meeting and they just want to go to bed. They're like, no. And Craig will be like, we're going over the agenda for tomorrow. You have to be there. And they all like have their heads on the table, so there's no time for nonsense when they get back at eleven. It's great.
More of a question, but I'm reflecting on this, on the Coggin Chog yearbook from nineteen eighty-four. It's amazing how many students mentioned the DC trip in their final comments in a positive way. Is that still the case? I'm just, I'm not up to date. They mentioned stuff about it when they
Yeah, they don't really write paragraphs anymore, you know, they like
Okay, so thank you.
We did when we were in high school. They, they, they do more nicknames and they don't list like clubs they were involved in and things they did, but, um, the feedback is truly very
It's an experience, so it'll happen.
That's what we do at the beginning of the year because it's just, it's a nice bonding experience for the senior classes.
All right, with that, um, I'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Passes. Frank, you're on your way. Deb, do you know if they're, if they're close to happening?
Uh, so they started about seven oh two. So you said you'll let me know within like a five minutes.
Okay, um, discussion on the final report and recommendations matrix of the Ad Hoc Fed Oversight Committee. Um, we had some public comment on this. Um, I know you guys have both the recommendations and the report from the committee. Uh, I just want to let everyone know because there's been some questions as to why we cut off discussion on the committee, um, last meeting. Uh, it's just really important that we adhere to our agenda and we make sure that things are noticed properly if anyone wants to attend or um, make comment. And it, it was a committee report, so I wanted to make sure that we put it today, um, for discussion appropriately. But it isn't any indication that we weren't as serious as we were last month. Um, I just want everyone to know that. Um, so we have two things, um, I can hand it off to Tina if you want, and then we'll come back.
Sure. Um, I don't really have too much more to add. Um, I do hope that everybody who's here tonight had a chance to read the report um, and the recommendations. Um, the recommend, the report was done and presented at the November eighteenth meeting. The recommendations were generated during that meeting with the committee and then added to, it was a shared document that they then added to. Um, after that meeting, um, so what you see hmm, in the materials are from that night. Um, look, again, I don't have much to add. Um, I do want to thank everybody who provided information, um, submitted, shared information, um, and I especially want to make sure that I thank um, the staff for their time and their trust. I know that it wasn't, um, always convenient or easy, um, but I wanted to thank those who volunteered to share, um, with us, um. You know, because our role in this is to, you know, like, we, we've said again and again, um, figure out how the board can support staff and student outcomes. Um, so thank you, staff, for your time and your trust. I am gonna kick it back to Bob and Lindsay so they can talk about next steps, facilitate any discussion that we might continue with here.
Yeah, before that, I'd just like to say too that I was, uh, very pleased with the teachers and other staff who came and talked where I was at the meetings. I think they were, um, very positive about their role in special ed. And their attention to it and their devotion to their students. Uh, they, they had some issues and stuff, but generally I think the vibration among them and the, uh, support that they give to each other in their roles, uh, in the, in the classroom or in their, uh, cohorts is really, uh, impressive. Uh, and I think it is the thing that we need to build on the most is that the teachers and staff who worked in special ed are really devoted. And, um, in my sense, they're probably underpaid, they're, they're probably overworked. Uh, they probably don't have, uh, enough time. Uh, and so I, I think the only thing that we probably can really do is time. Uh, and try to figure out how do we get time? Uh, and how do we figure out how to get, uh, time for them to work? I mean, they go home and they have to write many documents to take care of what they did during the day. Uh, it's more like being a doctor, having to fill out your forms at night and we're coding in garden, you know, but they have to do that and it's, uh, important. And I think that, you know, some of these recommendations will help. Uh, but I think trying to figure out, you know, with the administration, how do we get uh, more time for them to be collaborative is probably one of the really important outcomes. Uh, and we've, we've tried to find out why. I'm not sure we really found out why, but we found out what is, you know, there are lots of issues that are there and we needed to find a way to make them improve and hopefully some of these recommendations will do that.
And I, and I think too, the committee, you know, was, the committee was, committee was formed out of, you know, necessity and, and the board really wanting to take a look when, when we really felt we were getting some, some answers and, and concerns and you know, I, I know we've gotten a lot of comments back and forth, uh, about this, but I, I think it's important for us as a board to understand our governance role. And, um, and make sure that, you know, any recommendations come from leadership. And we hand this off to the administration and say, you know, here's our findings. Here's what we're concerned about. Um, you know, come back to the board, please, you know, let us know what actions to be taken, whether it's an evaluation or um, a consultant, or if it's something we're doing in-house and, and let the board know how we can best support, whether it's budget or our resources, um, for the administration or for the staff. And I, and I think that our leadership's committed to assessing and, and improving that climate. And I think that we need to put that in their hands and keep getting some updates. You know, we did get a monthly update on the interim configuration last year. We can add it as an agenda item just to get an update on any changes or proposals under the recommendations or actions here. I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions. I know that, um, I just want to say too, um, I talked to, Craig and I had a good talk today, a discussion, um, just to make sure that we had removed any language referring to unions. Um, so we, um, Language referring to unions, um so we um accepted that, and we're gonna remove those from that final report. But there's a lot, and I I think in the end of the day, um Tina, you've done more than. Could be imagined of a board member to put this together and meet with who you've met with and Bob, um. And I know we're all grateful for it, and I think that you've set a really good platform. For the administration to really analyze what we've come up with, um.
Part of this process is we turn this over. To you, Jen, and you can't hear me?
I can, but.
Part of this process is that you turn this over, you know, to the administration to kind of figure out how do we do this, so I think one of the things is. What do we want to do from the board's point of view, as to how do we? How do we monitor what's going on, how do you tell us what's happening? You know, the one that I was interested in is the supervision, uh you know, with Kevin, how? Do we, do we look at that, do you support it? Uh other recommendations, are there ways to handle this? Uh do we, we have a budget process that's beginning? Uh do we need to get something in there uh before we wrap up the budget? Uh so, you know, that's an important uh piece for us to look at is. You know, is there any structural changes in the organization that people would be enhanced? By some additional staff, additional level of staff, so I would like to. Probably leave it at soon, because the um him is wrapping up. The proposal pretty soon, so uh if you're if you're thinking about it. Kevin and Jen, you know, we need to talk about it, uh would be a good thing to. We can do that, you know, not at the board meeting, but prior to it, we'll get that discussion underway. Uh soon, and I would be happy to be part of that um discussion, I think it's. I think the relationship between the teachers, the special, the teachers and the principals. There's also one that I think the principals ought to get involved in, how do, how do you wanna? Uh how does, how does it work now? Now, how is, is there a way we could approve that? And, you know, I, there's lots of principals over there, we can get together and, you know, figure out. You don't, we don't have to, I don't have to, we don't have to be there, we just need to have you guys figure out. What's the relationship and how does that work, is it okay? Or is it not okay, is it, is there a communication issue or not, you know, just discuss this. You know, and, you know, talk to us about it, what, what you think is the best way to do it, so I think those are some really short-term. Issues that you need to address quickly, and um.
I think even some small stuff that makes a huge difference, I mean, um I know Eric Fisher had said that. Our agenda were communicating, and I know that they've been doing that really well, um. And so I I think even before we even had the recommendations, you know, there were some things that were looked at that could be improved. We could all use improvement everywhere, but I think, I think we're on our way, and. We have a lot of really brave staff in this district, um and a lot of wonderful staff, a lot of wonderful administrators. Um we want to support you all and find the best ways that we can support you.
Any other, you know, you have any, you know, Kevin? Have you looked at these things and are they doable? I didn't hear that nod very well. I mean, I think.
We will work on it as a team like we always do.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the board role in this is just tell us what you've done. Uh there's very few steps in here that. That, you know, require board action that really is directed back at you. Uh and so we'd like to have, make sure that we get some reports, uh uh and some input. Uh it'll be fun to have a meeting with just with some of the specialized teachers together with with you and us. To talk about, you know, how they're working and what's needed, but what, what shouldn't be done or what could be done. So um they're all looks very excited about doing that, so. Be happy to have that, you know, so I, you know, I look at all these things and. Um you you know, like substitutes, you know, I. There's something we, maybe, maybe we need to raise the substitute pay again, we did that, what's a hundred and tens now?
It's part of the budget process, some of these things. Definitely, um. Put some of these things already into our budget proposals, so um and we'll review with you guys. Um and everything else, but there, um certainly we took um. You know, we, we we took the feedback and information we got very seriously, and wanted to inform our next steps and our, you know, our. You know, my commitment to the well-being of all our staff and students, so definitely um started some of these things. Um hopefully, we continue to work with all of you and each other to for improvement.
I think we definitely asked the superintendent to address this on a monthly basis with us. Uh to keep track of what's going on, and um. And I think that she'll be willing to do that, uh and you give her a good chance to get hold of this. I think one of the advantages of having the interim will help us in. One of her roles would be to figure out, how do we do this transition? How do we get a superintendent that meets the needs of of all of the teachers and all of the students? And this give a chance to get into this and prepare a report for um the superintendent and so. Speak.
I, I was, I I wasn't going to, um but I I feel like I I can't thank the staff for their trust and their time. And not mention one more time, last time, um that in as much as we're talking about org charts and all of that, that. The biggest component and concern that they raised was an organization, it was the climate. And it was um comfort. Um and all of the things that are in there, so I want to make sure at this last meeting, for the public record, that we need to make sure that that is. Foremost in um the next steps moving forward, for however that gets presented. To um Dr. Charles when she comes in, um but I, in good faith for all the folks who talked to me and to Bob. Um I need to make sure that we hear loud and clear that that is a concern, and that is. Um something that weighs on people every day, um and that it has to be addressed. Um sooner rather than later, because again, the purpose of this was to make sure we're retaining the best. Um and have the best, so we need to retain them. Absolutely.
And with that, with the concerns that were brought up, with the twenty-one, twenty-two percent of special ed students that we have, is vitally important that we're all. Giving those services to those kids that they need, uh and that's, that should be our primary mission when it comes to this, so we want to support. Families and moms that have the courage to come up here and have that discussion, so I think it's vitally important that we. We do get feedback and we do get reports and we do get that staff to where it needs to be.
Yeah, and I I know we've gotten some comments too, even on, you know, looking at the whole district climate um with staff, um. And just districts, school climate in general, and I I think that we'll. Hand that off to to Dr. Charles, and I'm sure she'll look at it from a holistic perspective from the whole district, um and not just special education, I think it's. Um you know, the focus was on special education, but I know that some regular ed teachers and um some staff across the district also spoke to Tina and Bob and. Um we should make it a priority, we should want everyone in this district to be here, to feel safe and valued and cared for. From students to staff. Our community. We will keep it up, and we'll keep asking for some recommendations, I can pass it down to Charles and see how she wants to report to the board on it, um. But it it should be transparent and public, and and we'll get there, thank you. Thanks, Tina, for all your work.
One great hope I have as we move into the preschool configuration, for better or worse, but. There's gonna be so much better following the students, it'll be a better communication, there you go, we're gonna pass you off to the next school, and it has to be better. And I think it will be, and and I'm confident that, that we actually can be with the kids as much as we can.
Okay, with that, um I'm sorry, everyone. Uh we'll move on uh to last public comment, uh for agenda items, not on the agenda or on the agenda either way. If anyone has need, come forward.
Uh Russ Quick, current resident. Uh I'd like to first start off by saying that I hope you can all follow the proper rules of decorum while conducting business moving forward, because what took place last meeting. Is not something becoming of any board or committee member in our community. My son spoke at the beginning of last meeting with the fifth graders, and I thank God we left the meeting afterwards, and I have to witness the maturity displayed by some of you. We all listen to the Special Education Committee report about how staff are playing in the districts because, one, they are. Aren't able to provide the support these kids deserve. Aren't able to provide the support these kids deserve. And two, they fear speaking up for our children due to poor district climate, intimidation, and fear of retaliation. You, as a board, then proceeded to gang up on and attack the person offering a dissenting opinion on the swing space plans. Now, maybe triggering for some of you to hear, but. Everything Morris said was true and from the heart and respectfully stated, let me remind you that she is not only a board member. She's also the mother of an elementary student in district, a lifelong educator herself, and a former district teacher. Who still has many colleagues teaching in our elementary schools. Perhaps with all that background, she really does have a different perspective to offer you all. To attacker for having the bravery to speak up on behalf of all the parents and staff who have been reaching out to all of you. It's exactly why our teachers are afraid to speak up, hello, you just heard the report. Moving on, I have two things I'd like to point out to the board as well as those in our community listening. I find it interesting that in November twenty twenty-three, when we presented with all the options by Q A and M. They stated that a hundred percent capacity for Strong was three hundred and sixty students. So it's astonishing to me that we're talking about raising that number to four hundred and twenty-two students. That puts Strong's capacity a hundred and seventy percent using those numbers. Meanwhile, the high school is currently at seventy-five percent based upon the capacity. Outlined by Q A and M. If we moved our eighth graders there, the capacity would be ninety-seven percent, and the capacity at Strong would remain at the current eighty-eight percent. Why was that not considered? During that same presentation, not a single option has Strong's school as a swing space, why is that? Why exactly did it change that it was the only option? This brings me to my next question, over the course of your swing space discussions, did you or. Q A and M meet with the building inspector and fire marshal regarding the additional one hundred plus kids and staff you may have put in Strong's school? And the changes you intend to make to that building? There's talk about moving lockers, repurposing locker rooms and building walls, but will these spaces have enough of an occupant load to account for these kids? Would it be sufficient egress in an emergency? I would hope that you all considered that prior to your vote last month, and you're not gonna just dump that all in this administration, that's not fair then.
Do you have any more in-person public comment?
Yeah, Betty from Durham again, uh I sent an email to you guys earlier, but I'm just gonna reiterate my question that I had for you. Um kind of to go off of what Russ just said. I was asking what the budget for the actual construction of these bases are going to be in Strong for the temporary rooms. Um the swing space that is being added, moving locker rooms, putting staff and students into locker rooms. Putting a counselor into a room inside of a teacher's lounge, building a room in the library for special education. Uh again, is there appropriate egress for these rooms? Are elementary art and music teachers now rotating three schools, where will they be housed in Strong, and where will they have all of their own? Equipment and everything, you know, kept for these kids, are they gonna be on art cards, all that? Uh we would really like to know, um where are students who need a separate setting for testing going? In the school, uh current sixth grade staff won't be able to get any of their current books or supplies in the new rooms. Where will they be putting everything? And with four rotations of lunch, will there be a need for more teachers with duties, and is that covered in your current contract? And how will all these changes be made in just eight to ten weeks over the summer? Um I did also send an email on January fifth asking for clarification on a response to an earlier email. Uh which I have not heard back from anyone, that had said um no actions will be taken by the board without securing the required approval. What does that mean? Does that mean the grant funding is not secured, no changes will be made, no students were moved, um or is this referring to permits? The vote that was taken on September eighteen did not clarify anything, so I'd really like to give an answer to that.
I have three minutes, don't have time, last thing I want to do is extend this meeting, but yes.
We do have one online, I think you can go to that one, I I don't know who it is, so if you could state um your name and town, it says iPhone.
Hi, good evening, it's Lauren Hall from Durham, um I just wanted to respond in regards to um. When you were looking at the special ed, the investigation, like taking a consultant or something, Bob had mentioned the only thing we could do for teachers is time. Um and I kind of like to challenge that theory to a more um a broad spectrum thought, that I think it's far more than time. Overall, it's curriculum structure, support, intervention systems, it's a really, it's a district thing, it's not just a department. Cause it flows, correct, you know, it's, it's not, special education is not a place, it's a strategy. Um so when you're looking at that to just really do a special ed, I think you really should look at the district and use a third party like PCG. Cause they'll give you everything, and you all made some really promising comments tonight. You know, Lindsay said everyone could use improvement, so I'm hoping that means you would also support that vision. Uh this has been a very fiscally responsible board, that's a better use of your money, because you're going to be looking at everything, rather than making limited suggestions. For a department that might not fit with the district as a whole, that's not gonna be super helpful for you to implement. Tina talked about climate, thank you so much, Tina, and looking at a broad spectrum consultation, we'll be able to examine all of that, and John. Thank you for commenting on those brave families like Sarah who spoke up and really hearing their voices, and I think that this would look at this as well. And specifically, I referenced PCG, just from personal experience having been in other districts. They look at all of the pieces rather just than one topic, and you as a board can give them guiding questions to focus their work. As minute or as broad as possible, and I just challenge you, encourage you, implore you. To maybe just consider a few options to dig deeper, so we're at a whole bunch of changes, and I think we could do a lot. A lot of good with one thing at the same time, thank you very much.
I don't see any um any more online public comment, do you have any more in person? Okay, with that, we can run down, um I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Linda, second. Bye, Bob, okay, all host in favor? Aye, thank you all so much.